Okay, welcome to the United States of America. Before we get started, we need to call the roles. So Ms. Hatfield, are you ready? Can you call the role, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. King.
Here.
Mrs. Patrick. Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Mrs. Feasel.
Here.
And Dr. Weiss.
Here.
Thank you.
Now, would you please join me in saying that we're going to do this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Tonight, we need to approve the agenda. We do not have any changes or amendments. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I have a second? One second. Any further discussion? Call the role, please.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Dr. Weiss.
Yes.
And Mrs. Feasel.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have one presentation tonight, and it's from Todd Meyer, our Chief Operations Officer, who is giving his annual staff update. Mr. Meyer?
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to share. This is the annual staff update. Thank you. Thanks for your here. Is that better? Very magnetic.
All right. Please give me that.
Thanks for the opportunity. Thank you for sharing.
I can't get... Can you see more into the mic?
Again, maybe I wish you were here.
There you go. Is your cell phone in your pocket? So that makes that go off. Okay, yeah.
How's that?
Okay. There you go.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. So, you know, first, I'd like to start off with some highlights. People ask, especially during the summer, how this is your visit time in HR. However, we continue to always visit in HR. Obviously, we have a lot of employees, and we do a lot of hiring, doing it each and every year. Certified throughout the year, or classified. But first, I'd like to highlight the shale letters, elementary staffing shale letters. We hired Mrs. Janetti back in January and started that process almost immediately with staffing shale letter. Mrs. Janetti worked through the spring and hired about 65 employees to help with shale letters. Next, we just started late in August that we received Forbes Best State employer recognition. So obviously, we're excited about that, as well as three-time recipient of the CEO of Top Place. The Forbes, that was new for us, and this recognition was created through a survey of 8,000 US employees across 25 industry sectors. They collected direct recommendations from our employees, as well as indirect recommendations from workers in our industry surveying. Considered every aspect of employees' experience, such as working conditions, salary, and potential to growth. Of the thousands of companies eligible for this recognition, only a select few are awarded in each state. The Best in State employer title reinforces our reputation as an organization that provides excellent employment opportunities at the local and national level. So obviously, we're excited to receive that recognition. And I'd like to highlight that there were a little too... Grievances through certified and classified associations. And really, zero grievances with an organization our size is a really great thing to recognize in us. We have great partnerships with our associations, and we do a really good job of communicating with our administrators and working with our associations to make sure that our administrators are willing and understanding the contract. And obviously, we work really hard to make sure that we're honoring these contracts. The last couple of years have been a little bit different from these next couple of months as far as how we recruit. You know, one of our biggest recruiting days every year is our Certified Entry Day every year. We hold here on campus. So the last couple of years, we've had to do that virtually. Typically, we come to one of our high schools one day and invite candidates from really all across the country to interview. So the last couple of years, instead of canceling, we were able to do that virtually. As well as, again, classified job fairs, a little-known point about the year. We are starting getting back to face-to-face, using health and safety protocols to conduct those unclassified job fairs, because we do those on a regular basis and obviously lower them as candidates. And then, level of high-quality and efficient service. Even the expectation is, obviously, we know that we're here to support the organization. And given our senior organization with over 2,700 employees, that can be very challenging. But I want to recognize our HR team, our knowledge, and they come to work every day at all for certain responsibilities, and really work their job servicing the organization. We just had, as a matter of fact, two of our team members resigned right before school started, took up their jobs in the district. So we were down a couple of people, but honestly, we didn't want our level of services dropped. Again, kudos to the team, and be sure to recognize HR team. Staffing timeline for certified candidates. An organization our size, there's a lot that goes on with hiring and selecting new employees. So, you know, it just doesn't happen overnight. We really work with our administrators and have a plan in place. Typically, it lasts almost a whole year. And so, like I said last year, we started in January, posted shale letters, elementary positions, and worked through the spring with that. Also, a couple of years ago, what we've done is we posted anticipated openings, because due to our growth, we know that we're going to hire. So this helps us get people early on, candidates early on, to apply to Montagni. It allows us to get a head start on the interview, because, you know, a lot of issues sometimes may delay the spring more or something, and that can be a challenge, obviously, when good employees are getting tired elsewhere. One thing that we always do is learn strategies. I go to every building and meet with every building principal, as well as some of our district supervisors, to talk about the growth of anticipated openings in buildings. We discuss that, and obviously, we've been having that for the spring. And then, we get together with our high school and middle school administrators to go with staffing, because the last few years, because of opening buildings and moving enrollment, we do have to transfer staff based on enrollment at the secondary level. So we do that in January here, and we've included the middle school staffing, especially with our shared staffing, so we can be more efficient in how we share staffing. Mostly with our relax, like Northland, as an example. We share staffing from high school to middle school due to the corporate situation. So that's been really well done the last couple of years. And we started three years ago, this annual district-wide elementary staff attempt form. And that just gives us the opportunity to send all of our elementary teachers their desires for next year, so if they want to stay in a building, they may want to switch grade levels. And obviously, with opening shale letters, there was an opportunity to go to another school. Another major, major feat this year was the transfer of CBL teachers back to the buildings. So as you remember last year, we did the two CBL program. We hired over 200 teachers in that program. So we had to bring them all back to the buildings. And so, we looked at that process early and communicated again with our association, worked through that seamlessly, where everybody gave the landing map to their original positions, or obviously, we had the opportunity to apply vacancies in the buildings. As well as then external postings that we post externally in our department. And again, I always say that Montagni has a great brand, so Mrs. Feasel asked this question in her presentation a month ago. And we have active applications in our system, so as of today, over 4,000 active applications in our database. And obviously, that helps, because when we have that many applicants, it's a lot more challenging to get a job and continue to attract some top talent. This is one of the metrics we use, too, because it's moving. So we want to make sure that we're moving with positions as far as as soon as we're vacant. We want to make sure they're posted for a couple of weeks, and then jump on the interview process. Again, this is key, so that we can attract high-quality candidates to the organization. So our goal is always buy office of our certified staff, have 100% of our staffing positions filled. So we have metrics that we use by June, July, and August. And again, by August, pull up that more than 100% of staff, so we can almost have 100% of staff serving efficiently. Strategic actions, again, I talked about strong brand identity. A lot of people want to work with Montagni, because quite frankly, it's the best district in the state, and obviously, very competitive across the country. So we continue to do great things here. A lot of people want to be a part of our development here. I've already talked about the certified identity day. But one thing that's important, and I stress this, because it's hard to get into Montagni in some of our positions. So obviously, there's opportunities to sub in the district. And we hired a lot of subs in our district, and a lot of long-term assignments for teachers who go out on a longer term for many reasons. But they have the opportunity to come in and teach and work with our kids, and really, it's a great, harmful job interviewing with our principals and our subs. So last, or this year, we hired 21% of our new hires from the certified substitute pool list from last year. So again, that's really good. If you don't get in for a sudden, if you sub Montagni, there's still opportunities here. 61% of our new hires are from a certified candidate list, and this is another strategy that we use to create this list, as we're interviewing at all the job fairs, and then we pull people on that list, because if a building has a vacancy, like, for example, K-3 positions, where they may have five on a gap. So it's an opportunity for them to look at this list and pull some of those licenses or candidates off that list that have already been interviewed by an administrator in the district, and then obviously, bring them in at a building level. We always highlight our own. We graduate just incredible young men and women every year from Montagni. So this year, 17 of our new hires are from Montagni graduates. So we always like to see others when they come back and want to teach at Montagni. And then, just a couple of metrics, too, as far as we do satisfaction surveys of our onboarding and our certified orientation managers. So continue to get really high marks from onboarding our new employees through that process. So Ms. Hatfield was employed. This year, 20 administrators, 107 teachers, which is new basically. Last year, we were like 64, 65 new teachers, and 65 classified. And that's 65 classified since July 1st, which, again, when we hire classified, it's all year. We're hiring all year. So that, those, that's 65 since July 1st. 35% of the administrators were diverse. 95% of our certified staff diverse. 13.8% of our certified staff diverse. I just ran this week. Our student demographic, we're over 30% diverse in student lines in our districts as of this week. And I agree with the graduates there. And then, our administrators, though, just 1.55%, are located from within. So obviously, when we look at our talent management strategies and developing our people within the organization, that's important, a part of our strategic plan. So I think we're doing a pretty good job with that. Reservations and retirements. So we have 11 administrative reservations, and then you can see the certified reservations and retirements. So obviously, along with the group positions, we still have to fill those positions. And then, throughout the year, again, in classified, we need more, because that's always happening, this whole reservations. Certified budget, 107 new teachers. 45 of those teachers were hired for growth. We had allocated 52 positions in our five-year forecast, so we came in under that. Again, we really look at the data as far as enrollment and course requests, and then hire when we need. So we hired 35 for growth, and that is a pretty good shale letters as well, because every teacher's shale letter, before the training, teachers from in the district because of the relationships. Average teacher experience, new teacher experience, about 4.1 years. I think that's a sweet spot in our patient, when you get to four or five, you're more, because you're not creating brand-new teacher, and you have some experience coming in. So that's a pretty good metric that we use as well. And we always, when we forecast how our hiring and the number of teachers we're going to hire, we always use that budget metric of the master set, 355,000. And again, this year, we came in under that, which is always a goal for us, so we're hiring across those 100% of teachers. We keep that in mind as far as stating for budget. Again, that's a physical responsibility, and we have a luxury to consume the people applying in the district. So just to kind of sum it up, these last two slides, our staffing totals, 126 administrators, 15, 1,514 certified staff, 864 classified staff. The ESC staff is 216. Again, ESC staff would be preschool, and then some of the support staff, people services, OTs, DTs, school psychologists. So we have 216 employees entering the ESC. So total 2,700 employees, and we keep growing. And it's a lot of people, a lot of good things on a daily basis in Montagni. You know, one of the challenges that we faced, just there at the end of that grab up there, the certified substitute success, that's bad. So if you go through, you work out probably 40%, 35, 40% of where we work pretty good. And that's a challenge for us. That's a real challenge. So we've been, obviously, working through that and developing strategies. New districts try to help with sub coverage, and we're going to hire through sales at the building levels, and we have to fill those needs. Our teacher attendance, the first couple of weeks, varies around 93.5%. So it's pretty good. However, let's look, our field positions, we're filling, that's not in 100%. So we're working on that. So that continues to be a challenge. And that's certified, as well as classified. Classified subs, it's a real challenge. And one thing that we're going to have to do here is look at rate of pay for our subs, because we were there last month, so first couple of days, it was 59,000. So that's one thing that my teams are going to take into account, and just a couple of weeks, probably, give a reputation. So if you look at every, our certified staff across the district, and we like to break this down into years, so you can see most of our staff, so over 60%, I believe, are staffs that sit in the middle there between 11 and 25 years, and then a higher end, 1 to 10, and then lower end, 26 plus there. So, you know, that's important for us to continue to monitor, to see that trend and how that may shift here in the future. Okay? Any questions?
I have a question. Does anyone else? How many permanent subs did you say we have, or?
So, yes, full sub. So we currently have 23, 25 of our buildings built. We're going to try to hire 25 more, so our goal is at 50, because that's, and then really our sub filling, that's a challenge.
I have a question about transportation. How are you staffed? It's usually a struggle.
Yeah, so every year, at the beginning of the year, obviously, transportation is a challenge. So this year, we had eight bus drivers resign within a normal U.S. school. So that put us behind. We were doing pretty good until July 1st, and that was behind. And when you hire bus drivers, they have to do a processing and certification, and you just don't show up and ask them, hey, you're on a bus. And then, with that, we have people on a long-term leave, short-term leave, due to various reasons. So currently, we're down, we start the day typically down 22 to 23 bus drivers. We start the day without 22 to 23 bus drivers. And I gotta tell you, I've been over there a lot, and our team over there, they are working tirelessly and just doing all they can to still provide the bus service to get applicants to home from school. But it's been a challenge. So we anticipate we'll look at that weekly, so I think that we're going to get, I think we're in trouble with Mrs. Carter, this next year, we're going to get a lot of new drivers back, so that will help. But it is a challenge, because we'll transport over 15,000 students. So we'll double back routes, we'll trip it back, we're splitting routes. A lot of our office staff, when you interview as an office staff member, your transportation, you have to be willing to be your CBL or have, you have to have a bus, because a lot of times, their first line defense is a little bus, and you sit up, but then it takes people on the office.
Right.
So it's a challenge. We're working through it. We're going to try to continue to develop a strategy, if it works, and so we're working on that right now.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So I guess I have like a two-part question. So one, as you think of the average years, right, at 14.2, which I think it's an important metric, because it kind of determines where we place kind of on the grid, on the pay scale. Where, how should we think of 14.24 relative to comparable districts? Are we relatively younger at or above? And then, with the recent opening of Shale, and you look at the 14.24, are we bringing that average down, because we're bringing in new, 107 new teachers at an average tenure of four, right? And it's continuing to help us manage our salary and benefits?
I think it's, I don't know if you're right now, I think it's slowing, it's slowing.
Slowing the growth?
Yeah, slowing the growth, for sure. So as far as comparative districts, I don't know how that compares, like standing here, and obviously, I don't know that. But I would say that's, in a district our size, that's pretty good. And if you have that 14.24, that's just based on experience, and then five districts, I would say that's a pretty good average.
And numbers also skewed a little bit, because we bring people in sometimes from outside that have a 15 years' experience, but we put them at steps 10 on the pay scale or, you know.
Yeah, so that, that helps us. Is there a, is there a range, and they have 11 years of experience?
Somebody sitting in that 11 to 15 range could actually have 25 years of experience.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. The next thing at the board, has to... Okay. Thank you. The next thing at the board's attendance report. And as I started writing this, I was mistakenly writing August instead of September because I can't believe it's September already, but it is. And we're back in action here at Olentangy. Next week, on September twenty-second, the Parent Academy is hosting their first educational opportunity of the year for parents. The Parents Academy is made up of district parents, one of which Mindy and I met this past week. We met with one of the members of the committee. The parents work with our Assistant Director of Student Well-being, Alicia Behrens, to plan programs for the parents and guardians in the educational opportunities that we will be offering to them. Next week's program is parenting to promote mental health and well-being. And if you are a parent or guardian who would like to get involved in this group, please reach out to Alicia Behrens or even Mindy Patrick, and they can get you involved because that's a group that we rely on for our parent and guardian education. I was also looking at student enrollment because I love to look at the numbers. And the latest numbers that we've had available to us were taken in the last week of August. And we have twenty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-seven students in grades pre-K through twelve. That is point zero zero four from our projections, which is like spot on. I don't know how they do those projections so close year after year after year. Orange and Liberty are our highest enrollment for the high schools, while Berkshire, Orange, and Liberty Middle have our highest middle school populations. A full report on our enrollment will be presented in early October, and it'll be those numbers that we base our October fifth, our October five-year forecast on. So that will be, we'll get the enrollment projections at the early October meeting and then the five-year forecast at the later October meeting. So speaking of the five-year forecast, the state still has not released the new funding numbers based on the new funding formula. I don't have my cell phone with me. Currently, we are receiving funding based off of the old formula, but we have been promised that in October, the new calculations will kick in. Again, it is those funding numbers that will be used to build the five-year forecast. The Finance and Audit Committee will be meeting in mid-October to review the five-year forecast. And then the board will review it at the last meeting in October. This document is required to be filed every November and every May with the state. And it is this document that the board bases many of its decisions on, from when to build the next building, to how many staff members we will be hired in the future, to what the supplies will look like in each and every school building. So those are important things that are going to be coming up in October. And that is all I have, Mr. Rich.
Good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
All right.
Good. Well, thank you. Thank you. Welcome, everybody. I have a bunch of good things going on happening throughout the district. Early nice to see we're here. Mr. Spinner, thank you for hosting again. They started off this whole year with a motivational speaker, Kevin Atis. He's a first-disabled player in NCAA issue to receive a full athletic scholarship. His message focused on enthusiastic, inspiring students who can support other students and make positive impacts on their school. So it was a great presentation by Mr. Atis. And a number of those have happened all throughout the district. Olentangy High School had a great program. A number of schools have done similar programs to start a school year. Our world-famous Jonathan Jurovic received yet another award, as we all know, he was the state teacher the year, two years ago. He was awarded an Ohio Valley Emmy Award for his series, virtual art lesson series drawing with Mr. Jay that appears in W O S U. So if you haven't seen it, it's quite entertaining. But once again, congratulations to Mr. Jurovic. Actually, to hear it tonight is an episode of the American Ninja Warrior Junior. And we have two students, Yeez Sydney and Dylan. Dylan is known as the Happy Ninja. His mom says he's generally a happy kid. And Sydney is a Sly Ninja, as her initials. They are competing in the American Ninja Warrior Series. And they're also actually involved in quite a few activities throughout the district. So just wanted to give a shout-out, congratulations to them and wish them the best of luck. I think that the whole series is actually taking. They know where they finished, but they are supporting with secrecy. I want to also highlight, we have four students from, that are from Olentangy High School, Lyndon High School, and Berlin High School who have started their own five oh one C three nonprofit called Exploring STEM, X-STEM, to spread awareness and educate students about careers in the STEM field. They are hosting their first interactive workshop. So I would encourage any and all people interested in STEM careers and fields to take a look at what these students are going to put on. So I'm really, really proud of that effort. Mr. Gordon kind of highlighted this at our last meeting, but I'm sure we haven't got enough pictures for him. I don't know if that could quite deserve, I guess, I interviewed him because I really wanted to have a little bigger impact. But this southern student, Kai, in first week of school, they were writing about their hopes and dreams for the second grade. And he wrote that he hopes kids can go on a field trip. And that his dream has come true because he can play on the new playground equipment and on the big toy on recess. So, you know, again, it just, I think, and honestly, this started, we became part of our last bond issue package because the parents were trying to do this together at one of our elementaries. And we decided that that would be something that we think should happen in all of our elementary schools. And so, you know, I'm really proud of the community stepping forward and making it happen for those, for all of our kids. And the soft surfaces and playgrounds, hopefully the parents are enjoying not finding rocks and laundry from the old playgrounds. The soft surfaces are really, really nice. It's fun watching kids on playgrounds. So. As you know, the fall seasons are in full swing. And Berlin, for Olentangy, I'm sorry, Orange High School, last night, a football game. And the marginal bands did a special, terrific quarter celebration. They came out and performed together live for the first time ever. It obviously filled the entire field. And it was a great, great event. So congratulations to those, those dudes. We just have tremendous performing arts programs all throughout the district. And I'm just really proud of their work as well. As you know, we started off the year, we always hit the ground running in new curriculum nights early in the school year. So we've had all of those at our elementary, middle, high schools throughout the districts. And as always, they are very, very well-attended. So I thank all the parents that take the time to get out there and attend the curriculum nights and find out what's happening in those classrooms. And then Mrs. Beesel, you've already talked about this. Dr. Houston, as you said, will be hosting a virtual event hosted by the PPT program, Strategies Parents can Implement and Help Support Their Child's Well-Being. So again, thank you to PPT for putting that on. And I really have no extra highlights for you. Just some more important dates coming up. September twentieth is our first professional development day. And then we have our next board education meeting, September twenty-third. So as we heard at the last meeting, the professional development topic for this year was learner agency, discussing how agency is an extension of belonging within the classroom.
And questions?
Next, we have our Treasurers Report. Mrs. Hatfield?
Thank you. I don't have a lot of different slides, so I'm just going to give my report from here. But wanted to point out that we are moving forward with the strategic plan and goals for expanding leadership opportunities within the Treasurers Department. We have a recommendation for Mr. Ratliff as the Assistant Treasurer. And this is doubling that position to help us maintain our excellent financial reporting and continue to maintain the amount of information that we can produce and the quality of the work that we produce in our offices as we continue to grow with our student population and employment. Our e-Finance Plus implementation is going really well. We are, however, finding that we need to slow down the go-live date by a couple of months, basically because of the amount of data that we're trying to put into the new system. We want to ensure that everybody's transfers were completed and paid appropriately at the beginning of September. But we also want to make sure that we can get all of that data into the new software effectively. I mean, as Mr. Meyer mentioned, his staff has had a couple of positions that they've had to replace. And we've had some transition in our department with staff members. So we're going to slow down a little bit just to make sure that we have a quality product once we go live with that. Mrs. Beesel, you addressed the timing of state funding and the fact that that will be available to us in October. There is a Fair School Funding Plan Work Group two point O that is meeting and gathering to help talk to legislators about fully funding the Fair School Funding Plan. So I will be a part of that committee in working with colleagues around the area so that we can communicate with our legislators the importance of fully funding that. Hopefully, that will impact what we will see in the next biennial budget from the state. And then finally, we have a district rating from Standard and Poor's Global. The board approved a refunding of bonds, August twenty-sixth. And so part of that process is going to Standard and Poor's and receiving a confirmation or rating. And we have a confirmation for our triple-A stable rating from Standard and Poor's. So that means that we have an excellent credit score in terms of selling bonds on the open market. And it helps the district to reissue, refund, or and/or issue, excuse me, new debt at the lowest price possible. So it's a great achievement to have that confirmation as we move towards this refunding opportunity. Other questions I can answer for you?
So that's like a credit score?
Yes. It's like a personal credit score. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. We're now ready for public participation. Are you ready, Hatfield?
Yes, ma'am.
She's going to draw the names out. And Mrs. Hatfield, do you want to let the speakers know what the parameters are?
Absolutely. Give me one second to kind of get organized here. So for public participation, it's the community's time to present any ideas, issues, or concerns to the Board of Education. Public participation is not a dialogue or discussion. It is an opportunity to present ideas or concerns to the board in a public forum. The Board of Education will respectfully listen to comments. Public participation will last for a maximum of thirty minutes. Each participant has a limit of five minutes to address the Board of Education. Participants will not be able to cede their five minutes to another person. We ask that participants state their full name and address when stepping to the microphone, which is in front of us on the floor. And public participation procedures are established by the Board of Education Policy zero one six nine point one. The policy in its entirety is available on the district website. So this is the container that has public participation requests that were collected. And I'm just going to start by drawing one. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. You are ready for your five minutes? Oh, can you, is the microphone on?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
Appreciate your soft attention to speaking for you.
Check his mic.
Hello?
Yeah, you just had to speak at the mic. Yep.
Appreciate your soft attention to speaking for you. Thank you.
You have to speak right into the mic, directly into it. There you go.
There you go.
I just wanted to speak to you tonight regarding, started with COVID and basically some of the teaching that is being looked at by the Department of Education. First off, I was looking over an article today on Science.org. And they were actually, you know, I know that masks and stuff are, they're a big deal. That our leadership is looking to try to think how, why we've got such a, well, we got the new variant now. And nobody is really putting any data out there. Nobody's, you know, it used to be President Trump was out there and then you had our governor out there telling us, giving us updates. We were all getting these updates. Nobody's giving us any updates anymore. Nobody gives us any information, nothing. It's just basically show the color. Here, wear your mask. And, you know, what's the definition of insanity? Doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. Well, I mean, but just like politicians, you know, just doing something, throwing a bunch of crap against the wall, expecting something to stick somewhere, this is not it. You got Fauci running around there with all this stuff, don't need a mask, need a mask, don't need a mask. We're ten masks. We're fifteen masks. Put more on. And nobody's looking at data. Nobody's looking at data. Nobody's giving us any data to look at and even help you with. Okay? You've got, I've got, I've read an article here that, you know, nobody wants to get COVID. But if you get COVID, it's a more effective, your immune system becomes more tolerant to COVID than anything. Okay? And when you, when you have gotten COVID and you get the shot on top of it, the immunity that you were once gotten throughout your life, it destroys some of it. And the repercussions of that immunization, you can't tell. There's heart conditions they're talking about. And the problem is, what we're looking at right now, we've got this cancel culture. Late-night TV saying, well, if we have, we have, we have living hospital beds. Okay? Or if we have a problem wondering who we're going to treat, let's find out if they got immunized. If they're not immunized, well, they'll die. You know, believe it or not, our kids hear this stuff. And the leadership here, looking at you, you guys are the ones that have to propagate the message. You're the ones that have to coherently develop and put forth a message that shows leadership, that shows thought. And if you come up with a definite plan and depth, something that says, I thought about this. I looked at the science. Unlike, unlike the current administration that hasn't looked at science about anything. I mean, Miguel Pardona's basically told him to go pound sand. Here's what we're going to go do. Where'd he get his data? Okay? You got, you got, you got Joe Biden running around. He doesn't have a clue. We all know that. Okay? So where, whose clue is? And then basically, he gets up there and says, oh, we're going to have something more from CDC. And sure enough, boom.
One minute.
Okay. So enough of that. So here, here's the other thing. The NEA, being, just like I said, powerful as they are, they're also pushing the sixteen-nineteen project that basically starts on, you know, you have everything based on enslaved Africans brought over to Virginia in sixteen-nineteen. That's the core. That's the basis of our, of our history instead of the Declaration being signed seventeen-seventy-six that goes right along with the critical race theory where you kind of subdivide. Because CRT thinks that because you're black, you're stupid, and you can't do, we got to help you. Or you're this color, we got to help you. And the white, you guys are the devils that did all this. So you were like that before. You'll never change. And you're going to be treated like that again. I'll tell you something. I have, I have a lot of people that don't look like me.
Your five minutes has expired.
We don't need to treat our kids like that. Thank you.
Dan, I believe it's Sandra's. Dan, I believe it's Sanrez?
Sanchez.
Sanchez. I am so sorry, I'm a terrible readingist. Thank you for your patience with me.
Dan Sanchez, 230, did they drop? You guys here in the back?
Yeah.
Mr. Sanchez, can you please come back to the podium so we can hear you?
No. It's all the other work.
And I'm going to talk to you about funding. Hopefully, we did hear together. So 20 years ago, I was a kind of engineer, senior case director of Reserve University.
You're addressing the board.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to translate into your ear. Should I have my?
You can hear him.
But you can't respond, so why does he have to look at you? You can still hear him. You can still hear him, right?
I'll keep, keep you speaking to my.
You can hear it. There you go.
So here's again, kind of engineer, senior, supposed to be Reserve University. Very emotional times, I watched, before I was coming down, I had a TV. Very practical, changed my life, I found it that day. Few months later, I lost two grades, unfortunately, I had a D in the SEC, and that changed my life, I care that day. And I realized that I needed my courage. So that, and of course, joined our SEC, became an officer, eventually became a pre-grad, pre-grad myself. Lost my combat, combat tours. And I'm sure to say that that changed my life and also do my courage. Again, I want to help you guys find your courage to do, so please, all on the turn. So you may have noticed in the past few, past few weeks, we've been watching our numbers, right, all the numbers, they told us, one more trip serves, a little bit more money, you know, a little more work, four more years. Success is right on the corner, victory is one step away. So I say that because I want you to know it sounds like your government officials are lying to you. Because they say things like, you get this little stretch, just a pass, just some distancing, just some hybrid, just a little, just a little. Victory is right on the corner, just a little, just a little, and we'll go back to home. It's a silent song that's a lie, and I want you to know it sounds like your government officials are lying to you. So what do we do about it? Well, we handle the quarantine differently. Okay? When I talk about sick kids, if your kid has symptoms and they're sick, stay home, right? You're sick, stay home. You're sick?
Stay home.
You're sick?
Stay home.
So sick kids can stay home. You're a sick kid, you're doing some quarantine action, don't do it. Send them to school, find your courage, and goodbye.
If you have a kid, just come on, it's insanity.
There you go. So send them to school, okay? But that's not courage, right? Because the teacher's going to kick them out of class, the principal's going to tell you, come pick them up, that's not, look them in the eye, okay? That's not courage, that's cowardice. What I'm asking from you is have the courage for your child, when somebody gets singled out and gets taken out of that classroom, stand up, rip their mask off, and say, no, I'm going with them. If you kick them out of school, I'm going to. You send them home, you send them to, send me to. The first thing happens, one student stands up. He's up alone. The second time happens, three, they stand up. The third time happens, five. The fourth time happens, entire class gets up and walks out, and they say, no, you will not take this child out. I told you the other day. I know he's not sick, I told you yesterday. We're not going to do this, start helping kids. This doesn't end until we stop them from.
Yes.
Because you're going to hear, just keep going along with it. Just a little, just a little, just a little. Two more seconds, all the way to normal. It's a lie. Okay? It's a silent song, it's the sound of your government officials lying to you. And we need to resist that urge because it's so seductive. We just want to keep our heads down, and we just want to go along together, they are at their school and critical development. But this doesn't end until we, as community, say, we are not complying anymore. I'm not playing along anymore. We have the courage to stand up, and we're going to do it together. So that's what I'm asking for you to do.
One minute, please.
I'm asking you to have the courage to do this, because at some point, they're going to quarantine your students. They're going to have somebody stealing, they're going to run a flag, they're going to run a law. And we need to have the courage to say, we're not allowed. So if they have to fall, okay, the faculty has the quarantine, the boys won't play anyway, even if they don't have a school. If they lock the stadium, go on practice field, still play the game. If they lock the library, they can't even play them out. We play while we stop, we still play the game. If they don't play, it's not true, probably. We go to high-tech parking, we clean lines around, we bring up lawn chairs, and we let the boys play. We're not playing anymore, we're on the scene of trouble. It's just, just one, just one, just one minute. It's the sound of your government officials lying to you. We're not playing anymore, we are complying. The community has to stand up and say, we are not playing anymore, we are complying to those. Stay with me.
Your time is up, thank you. Please make sure you're addressing the board, which is in the front, please. State your name and address for the record, please. Yes.
Sarah Kowlin.
Thank you. Yes, it should still be on. Does that work?
5962, walking in at now. Okay, well, this is my first board meeting that I've ever attended. My daughter's in grade, my son is in fifth, and honestly, I was just going to come here to listen from the book, but a lot of things happened this past weekend without, with my healthy child being quarantined. And at first, first I want to say that I was actually very proud of the superintendent for giving us an option at the beginning of this school year, the quarantine. That was the opposite. Fortunately, I think he got pressured into making us go to the option. Then that forced us into having to apply for mask exemption. And I did that with medical and religious exemption, and they took my religious exemption. So I'm standing here to pretty much let you all know that they pushed me out to the health department, saying it was all on them. And I want you to know that I talked to the health department today, and they actually said it is, well, in my case, it was the principal of the physical that dictates who is on that list. They don't give us, okay, so the health department gets a list of kids, and then if they're vaccinated, that is when they can go back. But unfortunately, in the third, you're not vaccinated. And so there is no other evidence, or there is nothing else to have a parent, you know, stand up for the child. They won't. The mother stops there. And it's not a loss, that's science, one person, she decided, the principal decided who was so far away, who was, and my point is, there were two boys, two kids. My child and the other child that had mask exemptions in that classroom. Now, my fifth grader is not a teacher or preschooler, so he can tell me exactly what's going on. And he said he was not near the child that was infected. He has no symptoms, he hasn't fallen, if he did, I would have been fine. But he has no symptoms. He told me today, so I called the health department, and I asked her, can you please take him off the list? She said that is typically in, in the principal's discretion, or whatever. But she's like, he's coming off tonight anyway, so it doesn't matter. So tonight, I said, well, you can go talk to her because the health department did confirm that you were a case, or not a case, a contact. And he said, okay. And I said, he's a good one. So today, this is a good grader, he's like, so today, I'm not sick, but tomorrow, I'm okay. I'm like, yes, and go.
One minute.
With the elementary kids know that this is wrong, and they can figure it out themselves. I'm just saying this to everybody, letting you know who's actually in control of your child. And it's not the health department that normally should get in, it is up to the principal that's in the school.
Forgive me, I believe it's Frank Drescher? Drescher? Am I close? I'm so sorry. Would you pronounce it for me, please?
It's close enough to go. It's Frank Reichardt, I live in 2433. I live in 2433 Hall Road, Pal. Like many parents here, this is the first school board meeting I've ever attended in nearly 30 years of voting.
adopted by this particular school board. I think it's a testament to some concerns that I have when my 15-year-old daughter views going to school as an act of rebellion. We've crossed into bizarro world when that's the case. When teenagers view it as an act of rebellion to go to school, something's going to rot. I, I don't want to talk about the risk to kids and COVID. We know the data. We know that a child is more likely to be struck by lightning than they are to die of COVID. I don't want to talk about how masking the youngest demographic, or the, the demographic least likely to be negatively impacted by COVID, masking them as a way to protect adults who have access to a vaccine is perverse. That's using a child as a human shield against a vaccine, and that's just wrong. I don't want to talk about it. I, I, I really don't want to talk about how the natural instinct of this board prior to the school year was that if you wanted to mask your child, you could, it was voluntary. But then to make it mandatory later for their health is for you to attempt to usurp my ability as a parent. When you decide health matters for my child, you are doing it based on single factor analysis. As a parent, I can't do that. I have to weigh the pros and the cons of my child wearing a mask. You don't know my kids, most of you have never met my kids, don't know their names, you don't know their medical history, you don't know their allergies, you don't know that wearing a mask caused depression or anxiety, or caused them to self-harm. You don't know those things. I wouldn't presume to make medical decisions for your children, I ask you not to make them for mine. I can accept that you've been dealt a lousy hand by the Board of Health. I can accept that the Board, the Board of Health's policy regarding COVID in schools is absolutely moronic, and you're doing the best you can. But how you react to that policy determines everything. I would like to read to you from page two, section five, from the Ohio Department of Health, on how the process works. The local health department determines the level of exposure and decides if the direct contact needs to be quarantined. Points to consider in determining exposure level. Interview with the direct contact. Check vaccination status. Determine whether the direct contact was wearing a mask. Assess direct contact's level of exposure.
To determine if they spent more than 15 minutes or less than three feet from the case. Right now, your, your school administrators are not doing that. How do I know? Because my daughter, I was told I had to quarantine my daughter from a school administrator, not a Delaware County health official, from a school administrator, because she was exposed in a class that she didn't attend. How you react to the policy determines everything. The last thing I would like to say is please, including your health curriculums, for all children, the actual statistics around COVID.
Yes.
My 12-year-old daughter, when I asked her, how many kids do you think have died in the state of Ohio from COVID since the pandemic started, said 10,000.
Next time, please.
I said, no, it was two, 2000 today? No, like, you take one, you add another one, and there you got two. Start teaching your kids, not fear the error of.
A through E for approval.
Superintendent, action items, A through E, do I have a motion?
I move.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss? Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick? And Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that completes the business, do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Weiss? Mrs. Patrick? Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and the next meeting will be on September 23rd, or 23rd, yeah.